I will call the Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. This meeting, hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting, hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom in Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-0793 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air MA US or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're muted. Hold that happen, hold on.
Thank you. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Agenda is approved. Any announcements for this evening? No announcements for this evening. First item up is public input. Is there anyone here this evening for a public input? Yes, please come to the table.
Yeah.
Can you please come to the table? Thank you.
I'm here because of the Peroni Park.
Hey, please, can you say your name and?
Frank Callahan. Anything else?
Uh, street, please.
Huh?
Your street, please.
98 Sandy Pond Road.
Thank you.
I've been here for 79 years. I've been on this board for nine years. And when I asked the selectmen, have you ever said no to anything that was presented to you?
There's a process in place and where we are in the process. We're moving things along in that ultimately town meetings decision that.
Yeah, but you're bringing it to town meeting. Can't you say no?
We could, but in my opinion, it'd be disrespectful to the committees that have put the work in.
Have you looked at it?
We don't have a rendering of what it's going to look like. That's what the meeting tonight is for.
Not only that, what about other places you can put it? I'm not against it, but let me tell you, Al Peroni would be rolling over in his grave. Al was a great, great guy. He had all the goddamn, excuse me, he had all the people, Little League, he started this thing program, he had the Little League field down there now. And that, that field, it used to be the high school plus the football field. There's no open space left. I, I just can't believe you people go along with it. These people have to find another area. You get Bishop Road, you get where the town public works, buildings are, they got plenty of land there, and you got Bishop Road where the, you know, all the junk is thrown in there. So I understand it's a big, big problem if you people go ahead, because I have 50 people already against this, and I'll have much more. Because all the families I know in the town of Air are against it. We've been here a long time. The Codies, I, I can name them all. McGowan's, I don't care, they were all against this. So I say second thought, maybe you have a second opinion of it, and let them go someplace else, but you can't ruin the Peroni Park. That's the last thing.
Final decision isn't being made tonight. We do have a committee that looked at two, went through two iterations looking at locations. There was originally the West Main Street location, which was turned down by town meeting. The committee then went back and looked for other locations, and within the town of Air, within our boundaries, this is really one of the only options we have. Regardless of whether I personally support it, I have to support, in my opinion, I have to support the committee that's done the work and helped them move it along, at least to the point that it can go to town.
I always, on the board, I said, if it's good for the town, vote for it. If it's not good for the town, vote against it. And then make up your own mind, either way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? Uh, let's, please, and then we'll get Cynthia afterwards.
What's her?
She's online.
Oh, I'm Fred Meshner from 21 Prospect Street in Air, and I'm only here because I'm very confused about the process that's being used to consider Peroni Park as the site for the I'd like to get it clarified. It's my understanding that some money is going to be used for the planning or the site development down there before it's approved by the town meeting. Is that true?
So the request tonight is for funding from the Select Board using ARPA funds, which is from the federal government, and that will help put together a architectural rendering of what this site will look like. Nothing is, no actions are going to be taken at the site itself. So what we asked the committee, the building committee for our last meeting was to, a number that they need for funding to bridge the gap from now until getting this to town meeting, so the town meeting can make the final decision as to whether or not to move forward with, with the project.
Is that, is that plan that's going to be funded by ARPA, or is that plan exclusive to the location?
Yes, it will be.
So it includes, the plan includes location. So you're trying to raise some money irrespective of where it's from, to make a plan for a site that obviously would memory people are against, without bringing it to the town meeting first? Is that, does that make sense?
In order for a proper presentation at town meeting to make an educated decision, I do believe it is necessary to do that. And we have done that in the past with the West Main Street. There was some funds allocated in order to put together an architectural rendering and to walk, you know, kind of look at the site, so that when we do present it to town meeting, we at least have some of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted.
Now, if the, how much is the original plan going to cost from the government?
That I, I'm sorry, I asked you.
Significant, how much is, how much are you going to allow the building committee to spend on the initial plan?
Building committee is requesting $150,000.
So you're going to spend $150,000 on a plan that may be shot down, very, very likely would be shot down at the town meeting?
We're spending $150,000. Whether it's very likely to be shot down at town meeting remains to be seen. Part of the reason why we have town meeting is to allow people to come forward and make their voices heard.
But you're going to spend the money before?
Correct, we do need to spend the money before.
Does that make sense to you?
It does, it's part of the process, unfortunately.
There's also, there was an entire committee that chose this site, so it's not just out of, it's not just randomly that we.
There was a committee that chose the site.
There was.
But I only learned about this on Facebook. I suppose I should probably be watching all the committees. I haven't been watching as much since I've got enough cameras, but go ahead.
So if I can just assist, there was also a couple of public meetings earlier this year, looking at the site. And so it was on Zoom and it was in person where it was discussed, and there were people for it and there were people against it.
So at that meeting, did people vote? Were they able to vote on the?
Well, there's no vote. You're giving your opinion.
Exactly, right.
But that's the way it's done. That's the way it's done in every one of these meetings, is that you come and you bring your voice. And then we figure out like, you know, how many sound like they're for it and how many sound like they're against it. And it was decided to move this forward because otherwise we're just stuck. And so you have to kind of move this forward, and we need to show a picture so that everyone can have a real rendering as to what is, what is being proposed. And that is the way it's always been at town meeting also.
The only question though is that you're going to be spending money on this, a significant amount of money, before you know that it will be approved by the town. And that's something that's common? The money, the money.
Yes, yes, because you have to create a proposal. I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry. Yeah, for something of this nature, it is part of the process, and it is necessary to spend some money upfront to get some actual design plans put together. So when you present it as simply saying, we're going to put a building on Peroni Park, that doesn't actually help people visualize exactly what it looks like, where it's going to sit, and what the impacts are going to be. Because the, the other part of the impact on this, which I understand everyone is upset about losing the field, is the park department, Parks Department input on how it's going to impact the facility there in general.
Yeah, I understand having to get this in order before you bring it to the town meeting. But the idea that you can appropriate money, even though it's government, it's federal money, it seems as though because it's federal money, you're allowed to jam that in there without an appropriations vote at town meeting. Is that, I mean, how are you able to appropriate this money without a town meeting vote?
Which, that's a fair question. The ARPA funds are specifically at the discretion of the Select Board to use. So there's not required town meeting.
That's the rule.
But that's just.
And that's what allows you to spend the money before you go to town meeting?
For this particular thing. We are, it's our discretion.
I find that unfortunate, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Cynthia Lefebvre, I believe was next.
Can I have a few?
Yes, thank you.
Cynthia Lefebvre, 37, Old Hardway. I'm here today because I am against building on Peroni Park, which is designated as open space for the town of Air. I would love to speak with the town building senior or community center, but not at the expense of our open space here in town. The town spent money on a feasibility study for a senior center. Peroni Park was never included in that study. Now we're changing the narrative to make it a community center, and suddenly Peroni Park is offered up as free without any other due diligence. I do not support the town spending $150,000 to pursue building on Peroni Park. And it appears I'm not alone in that tonight. If you want to spend that money, use it to find an alternative location and not Peroni Park, and purchase a suitable lot for the structure. Open space is not free, and Article 97 is a place to ensure towns don't give away their open space for this reason. Please reconsider and go back to the drawing board on our future community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Curtis?
Hi, Melissa Curtis, 22 Western Road. I just have a few questions regarding that $150,000. That is a possibility that this might happen, and will that be returned to the fund in order to fund something else?
No, the ARPA funds is funding that we got from the federal government for one-time use. There are some stipulations around what it can be used for, particularly around development, and around, sorry, infrastructure development. So unlike UDAG, which we generally would use UDAG funds, those would be replaced, ARPA funds are not replaced.
Okay, and what is the plan that if this does go through, where are middle school boys' baseball going to play? Because that's their home field. Where are all of the Little Leagues in the spring going to play? Because that's where they play.
That is a question for the Parks Department. The Parks Department did offer the land on Peroni Park, and they are supportive of the project as it has been presented so far.
That's unfortunate.
If I may add, the Parks Department indicated that the field in question for the senior center is one that is not used regularly.
Thank you, yes.
Six times.
I just saying what the Parks Department said here in an open meeting.
Anything else, Melissa?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. What is that? SM online, and then this gentleman in the audience.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sean Murray, Grove Street.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'd like to express my opposition to the senior community center committee's suggestion to use any of the extremely limited open spaces for one of only two parks that the town of Air has for its citizens to enjoy. I urge all the members of the Select Board to vote no on the use of ARPA funds until a more suitable location if found. I also want to state that I'm not objecting to the building of such a center elsewhere in town. Seniors and kids alike, I feel need an outdoor space to enjoy.
All right, thank you. A gentleman in the audience had a comment, please.
Eric Sekman, Church Street. I, like everyone else that has spoken this evening, it appears, do not support using the Peroni Park space for a lot of the same reasons that everyone else has indicated as far as open space. We've had building developments go up in town. Every development that seems to go in is smushed into a smaller and smaller space with more and more fancy tricks done to get as many houses in there. We talk about trying to preserve open space, and here we are taking one of the few spaces that we do have in a very small town. We can't just create more open space or a park, even if the park is not used as, or that particular field, excuse me, that particular field is not used as much as every other field. That's okay. Not every inch of open space has to be used all the time. The town was told that we needed to stop having the large Fourth of July celebrations over there because there were too many people and we couldn't get people in. Now we want to build a big center there. I'm not saying there will be thousands of individuals there at any one time, but again, the big concern was, how are we going to get vehicles in there? How are we going to get a response? There's only one way in and one way out. I don't see any large parking areas over there that aren't already designated for children's events and whatnot. So we have to build the facility and a parking space and be able to get people in and out of there, but we can't have a nice, large Fourth of July celebration and fireworks because that would be too dangerous. I don't, I'm highly, highly against taking away what precious, small, open space we have in town to use for even as good a, a good an idea as a community center is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dennis?
Hi. Into the lines then I go. So I am now speaking as a senior. Katie will be addressing the specific request for ARPA funding that's coming from the building committee. But as a senior, I think it's important for me to kind of chime in with, with our view. And that is that I fully understand the desire to maintain the open space. What I think is missing in this conversation, and what I hope the $150,000 and some proposals coming from the architectural firm about what kind of building will go there, how it will be situated, how it will be integrated into the park, submitting more than one rendering perhaps. So if we could do it like this, we could do it like this, or perhaps we could do it like that, with some cost estimates as to how much each of those various proposals might cost. In terms of the open space and what we are taking, let me disabuse people of this notion. We, whoever they conceive we to be, are not taking anything. That is, the Parks Department, the Rec Department, felt that Field 6 was the best possible location for such, such a structure. This is also in the context of the fact that the Parks Department has, on many occasions, publicly disclosed in public meetings that they have wanted for 15 years, 15, one, five, 15 years to have an indoor gymnasium so that the Rec Department could expand its range of services for the children of Air. The senior center has been housed in, let's call it one and a half rooms, in the basement of the Housing Authority Building since forever. They have also been seeking larger and better accommodations in order to be able to expand their services. And that's probably going back 15, maybe even longer years. So this is not, it is, what I would like to emphasize, it is not the case that we are taking people away from the park. The hope is that with the cooperation of the community, we will be able to enhance the park, bring more people to the park, which is a stated goal of the Parks Department, the Rec Department, the Open Space Department, Open Space Committee. You want people at the park. In order to be at the park, they have to go to the park. And this, I think, is going to be a terrific reason for them to go to the park. They will have access to community activities, they will have access to an indoor gym 12 months a year. And, and again, the site for Field 6 as the, as the preferable site is because it is only used for baseball games, it is my understanding, something on the order of 15 times a year. And the rest of the time, it is, it is essentially not used. And again, it is not the case that we are taking public land for private purpose. We are expanding public land for an expanded public purpose. And it's important that people understand that. More people will enjoy the park, and everybody, and this is literally true, people from the age of four to 94 will have a reason to go to the park. So I would ask that people withhold judgment on what this will ultimately accomplish and wait for the process to play out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, I appreciate that. And I do want to stress, part of what the $150,000 will get is a rendering of what it looks like, but also answers to some of the questions that did come up tonight regarding traffic, parking, et cetera. Ms. Copeland?
Thank you. I'm, I don't speak necessarily to the topic of Peroni Park because whatever happens will eventually be a ballot question or town meeting, and I don't want the integrity of me running an election to be skewed with me speaking up. I do want to take the time that when this board appointed members to this building committee, there were how many people that submitted their names to be on that? Three, maybe four?
Three or four.
There's a room full of people, and there's a screen full of names now because you got notification on Facebook, and that should be embarrassing to any and all voters in this You need to follow your local government, you need to be involved. This is not overnight. This wasn't the only place that was being sought after. And to stay away from any of the specifics, but get involved and follow what's happening. These are not hidden agendas, these are not hidden meetings, and sometimes we have to sacrifice from our families, I do it, sacrifice from what's going on in your personal life and be involved. So I'm glad people are upset or interested in this happening, but where have you all been? And that needs to be said. I know you three have been sitting, you five have been sitting through these meetings and other meetings along with multiple colleagues of mine. So I ask all the voters, even the ones that don't live in this town that are so interested, to get involved, because there were only three, maybe four people, I don't know the exact number, that wrote a letter and wanted to be a part of this process. So I'm glad everybody's a part of the process, but you need to make the sacrifice to be at all the meetings and do the hard, hard work that we need to do to put this building or this center or whatever, wherever it needs to be in the town that works for everybody. But it's insulting to a lot of us that dedicate time to this town to say that you didn't know it. The information's there, there's plenty of phone numbers to call, there's lots of emails that we answer, the information is there. This is not a hidden secret. It's going 25, 30 years to make this happen. So that's what's infuriating for myself, my colleagues, and I would dare to say all of you sitting at this table. This is not a flash in the pan kind of idea. So everybody that's listening, stay involved, continue through this process. If it takes 10 years, stay through it for 10 years. Make it happen for the town that you love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input this evening? No? All right, we're going to close public input for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Moving on to the next item in our agenda, we have a public hearing, application for general meeting, oh, sorry, General, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License for Pleasant Cafe Incorporated of Air, 7 Depot Square in Air. Please come forward.
Ready? We'll pull up another chair, sorry. Come on, Roy.
So he's going to read the notice.
All right. Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will conduct an in-person and remote public hearing on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 6:05 PM at Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Massachusetts, 01432, regarding an application for a new GLC 138, Section 12, All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License from Pleasant Cafe Incorporated of Air, 7 Depot Square, Air Massachusetts. For Zoom call-in information, please contact ATM@air MA US or 978-772-8220, extension 100. Name of applicant, Pleasant Cafe Incorporated of Air, 7 Depot Square, Air Mass, 01432. Date of public hearing, Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Time of public hearing, 6:05 PM. Location of public hearing, remote participation meeting held on Zoom, Zoom ID number 897-8090-0793. Meeting materials, information may be obtained by contacting Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air MA US or 978-772-8220, extension 100.
Thank you, Sean. You're welcome. You mind stating your name just for the record?
Frank Durkis.
Thank you, Frank. So we have the application in our packet for tonight. Were there any objections from any of the department heads?
So, Mr. Chairman, I had sent the feedback that we got to the applicant's attorney Friday. There were some issues with a former tenant and some back taxes. I was informed today that those were taken care of this morning.
I believe.
You got this? Okay, yeah, good. The police chief is in attendance. He had a few questions. If the chief could just ask the questions, that would be probably the best way to deal with it.
I have a minus chair, so I was kind of. So I had a couple of questions. One, it looked like there was a map that was submitted with the application, and it looked like there was some chairs or tables outside of the designated, like fenced-in area. Is that an accurate map, or the chair is going to be within the boundaries of the?
There's no plan to have chairs out, outside of the vicinity.
Okay. And then the other question I just had was with the.
Food truck, yes.
Is, is the idea of the food truck during the day, during the night?
So my wife's thought is she wants to have an ice cream truck. I don't know.
Sorry?
My, my, my wife's thought is at some point she might want to have an ice cream truck.
Okay.
So it's a no, 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 no plan right now.
Ice cream truck is cool. Yeah. No more questions. Trying to kind of get a feel for.
We're sold. We said ice cream trucks.
There was like a late night, you know, steak dip dinner place somewhere.
I have no intention of doing the late night stuff.
Thank you very much. I had no other questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Open up any questions from the Select Board?
So what will be like the menu?
So I'm currently doing a manure. I just do burgers and fries.
Burgers and fries.
You know, like kids, tenders, just basic stuff. But see, I've, I've been doing that now for almost 10 years, and it works so well. Just simple, just quality cook.
So be very similar to your manure location?
The, the plan is to, 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 to have the same on menu.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've heard a lot of positive things about you around the location, so.
Like how we worded it, plain and simple, that's sometimes good.
Simple is good.
All right. Mr. Chair, there's, we'll have you go to the Board of Health Office. I'm not sure if you guys have done that yet.
He's called yesterday. We talked about getting the food license.
Yep, okay, great. And then the Fire Department, of course, will come in and inspect for the liquor license. But other than that, everything looks to be in order.
All right.
I have no issues.
Open up any public questions, since it is a public hearing? Pauline?
Good evening, Mr. Hood and members of the board. Quick question regarding the license from the prior tenant. This is an application for a new license, so we're adding to our status of licenses. What is the status of the license that was issued to next stop?
Carly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been, it's in my possession in the office. My understanding from. My understanding from the landlord is they just essentially walked away and the license isn't in good standing with us anymore. So it's considered a new application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. I don't have any further questions. Okay.
I have no questions. So, all right. I'll make, hold on, let me get to that page.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, good.
That the Air Select Board vote to approve the liquor license for Pleasant Cafe Incorporated of Air.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Oh, one last question. Do you know, when do you plan to open?
So it's all depending on the license and staffing, too.
Okay.
But I'm hoping for October 1st.
All right. Okay. All right. Got it. Enjoy it. I'll figure this out.
Yes, please.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And chair says aye. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is municipal aggregation update, Colonial Power Group.
I'll get things rolling if you don't mind.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, great. So we're joined tonight via Zoom by Mark Capadona from Colonial Power Group. He is our consultant for the project along with Denise Allard. You may have seen an email go out this afternoon. The draft aggregation plan is on the website, and a public comment will open tomorrow morning and be open for 30 days for any residents or business owners to review the aggregation plan. But I wanted Mark and Denise to kind of go over, give everyone a brief overview, and if there were any questions, we could take questions. So Mark or Denise, I'll hand it off to you.
Good evening, Mark Capadona, Colonial Power Group, 5 Mile Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass., 1752.
And I'm Denise Allard, also from Colonial Power Group.
So we're here tonight to talk to you about municipal aggregation and kind of what it is. So this is on the supply side for electricity bill. So you living in Air have been through a horrific winter of National Grid's 34 cents or 33.91 cents per kilowatt hour. This is a choice. So this past winter, the townspeople in the town did not have a choice. They could have went in, you know, basic service or kind of what the Attorney General has called shock and festive waters with third-party supply. This is a replacement of that. This is a town program that's actually made so that there would be a choice for citizens other than basic service. So this, let me get the hot-button item right out of the way. This plan is all across the state. The statute calls for an opt-out aggregation. So what does that mean? That means before the program starts, everyone that's on basic service would receive a mailing. But if they didn't do anything, they automatically be switched to the town program. That doesn't mean that they can't leave the program. That just means that they automatically be switched out of the gate. They still, that's the beauty of this, and that's why I call it a choice. They'll always have the choice to be part of the program or not, and there's no fee or penalty for it. So what's in front of the town tonight is nothing more than an aggregation plan that we've put in front of any other communities. That plan needs to be hung for 30 days and then approved by this board. All this plan is is kind of the Constitution. Who's going to do what, when we're going to do it, how we enroll people, how we draw people, what are their rights and so forth. Doesn't have anything to do with supply right now. And unfortunately, here's the bad news. The Department of Public Utilities is currently broken. We're probably looking at a three-year turnaround on this filing. So, you know, from that perspective, it's a long process. Locally, you're probably only looking at six weeks. If this plan was approved by the select board, after the plan is approved, it would go to the Department of Energy Resources for a quick consultation, then only within a month, and then we would move on, you know, probably by, you know, October, November timeframe to the Department of Public Utilities, and that's where your plan will sit for a while. What does it actually mean to the end user? Because that's what everyone's asking. Really, from the end-user standpoint, this program is about an electron running through a wire. So right now, National Grid is your distribution company. They will stay your distribution company. They will continue to build. They'll continue to take care of power outages, issues with your meter, all of those things. This program is simply to stabilize and hopefully create some savings for the town vis a vis basic service. So right now, the utility goes out for you twice a year and without, I hate to say it, manage energy. All they do is manage the process. So for the last 20 years, they've been doing this. National Grid is going to go out again in September. They're going to buy 20, excuse me, they're going to buy 50% of their needs for the next year. And in March, they'll do the same thing, buy 50% of their needs for a full year. Those two overlapping six months will create your price. But in that scenario, they're not looking out for the townspeople of Air. All they're trying to do is exercise their process and make sure that it is done equitably for the supply community. Other than that, they're agnostic. That sounds crazy. They're agnostic to price. All they do is make sure that they get bids for the 50% of their load that they go out for, and once done, clients, it's within their range, they execute the contract. So what does it mean for the end user? What do they have to do? If they wish to participate, believe it or not, they won't need to do anything. They'll automatically be enrolled. So before a program starts, let's say you got an order, let's go on the, you know, the future machine, in three years, and you get an order, you go up to the marketplace, and the rate is 12 cents a kilowatt hour. The town administration signs off on, says, yep, this is the rate. Everyone, 30 days before the program, will absolutely get a mailing that's on basic service. They'll have a choice before then, 30 days before the program starts. If they choose to do nothing, we'll move them to this town rate at 12 cents. We'll never start a program that's over basic service. We'll always try to make sure that we're timing the market so we know what the rate will be and what your rate is going to be so it's beneficial when we come out of the gate. Here's the bad news. There's no guarantee. Savings cannot be guaranteed. There has been very large savings as of late, but I'm saying too, we don't know what the next six months will bring. But I can tell you, the way we manage it is we're looking at price and term and those kind of things. So we're doing, you know, we have a tremendous advantage over National Grid because they have two trading days a year, we have 210 trading days during the year. So that's the benefit of aggregation, kind of in a nutshell. Denise, lots of times I miss things, so I'm going to ask Denise if I inadvertently missed a step here. Denise?
No, I think you said it all. I think the only other thing is that any utility discount that anyone currently has on their bill, low-income discount, any budget billing, access to mass save, et cetera, those are all utility-based parts of your bill. It comes from the delivery side or National Grid side. So all those are still in place. You still have access to all that. You're not losing any discounts or any benefits with respect to those items. But I think, Mark, yeah, I think you captured everything else.
And I know this is one question that I always get, and I seem to forget it every time. If you have solar panels on your roof, this program still works for you. It's just that National Grid's always going to pay basic service. Whenever you're using power, you're going to be paying the, you know, the town rate, the municipal aggregation rate. So if you have that metering, it will continue to work again as a utility service.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Sounds good.
So, Mr. Chair, we're going to be, the plan is online now. We've created a short URL, so you don't have to dig through the website. It's just air.ma.us/energy. And you can, the plan is there in an overview. We have hard copies available in the town clerk's office, in our office. And Mark and Denise, that was one of my questions from someone that couldn't attend tonight, was the solar. We had some questions on that, so thank you for addressing it.
All right, thank you. Janice?
And the URL will also be placed on the town's Facebook page?
Yep.
Because the town has a Facebook page?
The town Facebook page, yes, correct. The official town page.
All right. Pauline, you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Will the town's aggregation plan be at annual rate or will it also change every six months as National Grid and other private sources do now?
That will be the town's decision. We will be bringing pricing, show the town six, 12, 18, 24, 30, 36 months. Now, if we're at historic lows like we were three years ago, we're probably going to do as far, as long as we can, you know, 36, 48 months. But if we're at historic highs, we're going to keep it as short as we possibly can, you know, whether that's six or 12 months. It'll just depend on how much, you know, what the town feels like they can do. But all of those choices will be available, Pauline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, please.
Eric Ekman, Church Street. I was just wondering if you're, if you have a setup where you have like a different supplier? You can have a thing where you have like a different cell still? I don't know how to describe it. But do you automatically switch over to the town's plan as well, or is that separate?
Fantastic question. So if you're on third-party supply, say with a constellation, direct energy, clean energy, one of those, you'd not be, the reason we can't switch you, we would be slamming you. But you could always opt into the program. The one thing that we ask is make sure that you don't have a fee or penalty to leave your program before entering the program. But you're always welcome to come into the program. That's not a problem. It's just, and there is no fee or penalty to do so. It's just on the current supply that you're receiving. Sometimes if you leave before the end, you get hit with fees and penalties.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions this evening? All right. Excellent. Thank you both for your time tonight and the information. Any other final steps or comments, Carly?
No, just I would encourage folks to take a look at the website and, or stop by our offices to review the plan, and we're taking public comment until the 20th of August. So thank you both for your time.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You guys finished.
Thanks.
All right. Up next is a request for abatement for On Water Bill, 95 Washington Street. It's a follow-up from our meeting, our last meeting.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, good. How are you doing this evening?
My wife said if I screw this up this time, I'm not welcome back, so.
Well, we'll try and help you.
Now this one.
I can just picture her going, you had all that info and that's the part you forgot.
I mean, there was a slow golf clap on the way back in the house. So.
So, yeah, so just to reiterate, so I know you were here at our last meeting, and we looked through the information you provided for the last meeting, and it was Janice and I in attendance, and we were supportive, but we don't have a dollar amount in order to make a motion on the abatement.
Okay. So the way I figured what the abatement amount was is I looked at the 2021 usage for the three months in question and then what the overage would have been. So the total abatement is $389.07. And that includes the late fee on the last bill, which we can.
How much was the late fee?
Yeah, 12 bucks.
12 bucks.
It's kind of like negotiating salary.
Steel burger.
All right. Any questions from the board on this one?
I have no questions. No.
I'll take a motion then.
Okay.
Go.
All right. Did we just want to discuss the late fee?
We can discuss the late fee if you want to discuss the late fee.
Because you asked about the amount, because I just want to, before I make a thing.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Are we fine?
I'm fine in waiving the late fee also.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that the select board approve the abatement amount of $389.07 to Matthew Murphy as presented tonight and last meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations. You get to go home.
I may stay. I may stay.
Because the last time you were here, you learned a lot.
I did.
So you need to stay.
I may stay.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Nice to see you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Next on the agenda, ARPA funding request from the Building Committee for the proposed Air Senior Center slash Community Center. I have one. I'll take another one. Do we have someone from the Building Committee, please?
Hi. Thank you for having us. We're doing great.
Good evening.
Hello.
Just wanted to say thank you for considering our request for $150,000 of ARPA funds to do the due diligence needed for early site development, concept plans, and a cost estimate for a community center at Peroni Park. And with those funds, we look forward to bringing back to the select board and to the voters of the town, hopefully more than one plan, to give seniors the kind of diverse programming and services that they need, to allow for intergenerational programming after school hours, to give kids in town a safe place to do homework, explore other interests, to land before their other Parks and Rec programs begin, and give the town a chance to develop a full and robust adult and community ed program in the space in the evenings. Wanted to add to that.
I just want to mention that, I guess, a little background on the selection of Peroni Park. I guess it may have been covered earlier tonight, but I want to just make everyone aware that the process that ended up at Peroni Park is a cooperative effort between Parks and Rec and the Senior Center Council on Aging. But before that, I think there's an overwhelming thought that we did not research many other locations, but as you know from the report turned in from that committee, it was somewhere in the vicinity of 14 locations that we looked at. A lot of that work could not be done in a public forum way because negotiations may have been discussed with private property owners, and there were some monies involved and things along those lines. So the meetings were all held right here in this room and discussed by members of that committee. I'm on the planning board, and I'll be quite honest with you, when I got appointed to that committee, I thought it was going to be easy to find a place in town to locate a 25,000-square-foot building or something along those lines. And I was about to learn that was not the case as we researched many, many locations around town. They ended up either being too much traffic, too far from the location of the center of town, or just all kinds of alternatives that we looked at. And most of the things that have been mentioned in the community are places that we already looked at and for one reason or another didn't work. So I'd like to endorse the fact that we're working together with Parks and Recreation to develop a situation that makes the park more usable, more user-friendly, and more popular. There's just no way to get off the ground without some initial funding from a source. We struggled with how we're going to get that source. We felt that the ARPA funds were an available source that might fit into this use, that the seniors would benefit, and seniors were affected by, excuse me, by the COVID. So as a result of, there's a somewhat of a connection there to try to influence the seniors as well as the rest of the town. And using ARPA funds seemed like a logical way to get to the next step. So I'm hoping that the select board will endorse the use of the ARPA funds, take us to the next level, where we can then come back with logical decisions in how things fit on the park. It may not work on the park. It may not work on the park. There is a risk involved for everybody. But I think we have to take a risk at this point in time in order to get to the end result and keep the process going. We will not get going if we don't start with some funding. So I'm hoping that you will support the request and looking forward to keep working on the project. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Well said. So I guess my question is, if you can kind of just walk everyone through. So the request is $150,000. What does that, what is that next level? What is the next step with that? And then also, what is the estimated timeline, knowing that estimated being the key word?
Did you want to speak to the? Sure. Yeah. So I have, this came in about minutes before we had our last building committee meeting. We've been, Dan, Dan Scalquick and I, Katie, we've been conversing with Catlin Architecture in Peterborough, New Hampshire, who have built many senior centers, and combined with a rec center. They, their most recent one was in Long Meadow, Mass. So we met with him down at the park. He sent us this proposal. And what we stressed to John when we met with him is we're kind of, we need to bridge the gap to get us to town meeting. What is that going to entail? So you'll see in the proposal, per our discussion, you know, we'd enter into a contract. They would issue a G, an RFQ to geotech firms to provide soil investigation of the area. We need to know what we'd be building on if we get that far, obviously. He would engage consultants of civil, structural, environmental, and cost estimation. He'd meet with our building committee to review the scope and possible site location at Peroni Park. We've, Katie and I and Kevin Melantick from the Parks Department met for over an hour with John down at the park. We stood right where the view shed is at the end of School Street. We explained that, you know, there's a lot of concern that we would lose this. He understood. We talked to him. It made me moving, I don't want to say right, I'm sure there's the direction, but moving it east?
West.
West, on the site if possible. We have to, you know, obviously there's a body of water and some wetlands. But that's what, this contract will allow us to figure out if we can reconfigure the building on the site. We're assuming a 24,000 square foot, just based on the work we've done already. His timeline here are approximate, and Katie and I had some concerns about ability to deliver, given there's a lot to the project and moving parts. And obviously there's the Article 97 issue that's separate. But the proposal is $100,000, and then we would allow 25,000 for the geotech soil investigation. So $125,000. We're asking for 150,000. Obviously, there could be other costs associated. But we believe 150,000. In this plan, maybe we will tweak the timeline associated, but that the 150,000 will certainly get the ball rolling. So we are closer to present a town meeting. A set of plans with a cost estimate.
So this is calling for a presentation at fall town meeting, which I understand the skepticism around that, given how quickly that will be here.
Right.
Okay. Any questions?
No, no.
Sure.
Well, oh, I hate it when I do this. So I just want to reiterate, okay, that no ground, no shovel would go into the ground unless town meeting stated, we approve, go forward.
Exactly. So the idea is that this $150,000 investment would allow us to get the drawings and the underpinnings for the drawings, like the, the site work necessary to come to town meeting so that the voters can make an informed decision. Because as I think was said earlier, you know, it's, it's hard to say a building and then have people make an informed decision. We want to give them the details and the information that they would need in order to make that decision.
And this rendering, this rendering could, would not only show like what it would look like from the outside, what it would look like as you're coming down the street towards Peroni Park, but also show like, hey, we're going to have an office space that's 500, you know, square feet. That didn't sound right. That's a big room.
Right.
But you know, you get my point. You know, there'd be like these three office spaces and here's the gym. And I think there was talk about an upstairs walking track, which be, would be used, which would be great in inclement weather. So this drawing would show every possibility of what would be in that. Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
I think what Ms. Livingston is referring to is the program. So a program would be worked out for the use of the building. So the rooms and each, each of the rooms are thought out. Elevations showing the location of the building on the way in.
I'm not an engineer, but yes.
That's what, that's what it is, I think. And these are, these are not the final design drawings emphasized.
Right.
These are concept plans, which are efficient enough to show you the, the whole program and the location.
Understood. Thank you. Pauline, you have a question or a comment?
Um, kind of both, but that's no surprise, right? Thank you Scott. I think probably answered this question. I just want to reiterate it. If the use of Peroni Park is not permitted under the EOP A-regs or general law, Chapter 274, what is the plan to recoup the ARPA funds that are potentially being authorized?
There is no plan to recoup the ARPA funds. They're one-time funds that are being expended, expended.
And if I could, Mr. Chair.
Please.
You know, there's some talk out there and certainly on the Facebook page. I understand there's a private page that many people aren't able to access on the Peroni Park site, that it's illegal to build on Peroni Park. It is not illegal. There is a process put in, put in place by the state, which we will follow. Again, same news as last week. We're waiting. I've tweeted the office from my personal Twitter account. The state senator has put calls in. We've emailed, we've called. I don't know where the executive office of environmental affairs is. I understand this is a cumbersome process. They want to protect open space. I just wish they'd return a phone call. So we still will be tracking them down. We, we have to, to learn about the process, and we'll continue doing that. But it is not illegal to build on Peroni Park.
And I guess the other thing to mention is if we allocate the ARPA funds and something does stop the project in its early stages, anything that is unspent does come back into the ARPA funds.
Of course, yeah.
Back to availability. Janice?
I think I forgot my question.
Okay. Pauline, you have a follow-up?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying any unused ARPA funds, Chair. And just for the record, I have never said anything was in label related to this project.
No, no, not you. Just on, just on the community page. Yeah.
No, I, I understand. Ms. Antonellis, I've seen her comments. However, I want to get into the RFP process because there, at least from what I have read today, and thank you for sending the draft minutes, Carly. Is June, on the June 20 select meetings meeting, this Livingston specifically asked about an RFP. And Ms. Antonellis said she would work with the DPW to fine tune the funding request. And I believe you've done most of that tonight, at least through your explanation. But that an RFP would be posted, is the word used, in about 45 days. And then at the July 12 building committee meeting, there was further discussion among the group. Also, Ms. Antonellis and Ms. Petrosi met with the architect. You never produced that report, and I will make a request here for that tonight because it was not produced at the building committee meeting. And I think I won't, I think I understand what the ARPA funds are now being used for, although it wasn't clear until July 12. I just want to confirm that. Ms. Petrosi said that the funds would be used to take into consideration the wetlands and other constraints on the site. And I'm gathering from what was said tonight, that is the purpose of the $150,000. Would you all please confirm that?
Yes.
Who was that? I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Yeah, that was an affirmative from Carly.
All right. Thank you. So two questions, short questions. Will there or will there not be an RFP? And if so, for what? And, and then my second question is, so will there or will there not be an RFP and if so, for what?
Carly?
Yeah. So there's, and I reviewed those minutes a million times so far this week. I think we got ahead of ourselves. We do not need an RFP for this service that we're contracting Catlin for these schematic plans to get us to the next level. Pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30B, design engineer services are exempt from the public bid process. So of course, the project, once, if approved by town meeting, we will need to put the project out to bid, of course. That is when the full RFP and construction drawings will be issued.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was my understanding as well. However, that same statute you just cited recommends soliciting qualified qualifications and prices from at least three designers. You've only obtained that information from one from New Hampshire. Ms. Petrosi mentioned an architect from Long Meadow at the July 12 meeting. Are we exploring other options or we're just sticking with the one from New Hampshire?
This, this is the Long Meadow one.
I thought I heard New Hampshire tonight.
He's, his office is in Peterborough, New Hampshire. He designed and built the Long Meadow Senior Center Rec Center.
Understood. Thank you. But we are not selecting, soliciting two more competitive or comparable designers?
So Dan and I, we reviewed all the firms that had submitted for the actual original feasibility study. Dan, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And we, we've, I, I think, Dan, you put in a couple of phone calls to other.
Correct.
To other firms, but from all our research on specific senior slash community center, Catlin Architecture was the best, in our professional opinion.
And Katie can add to that. Yeah. He's, his firm is the sort of gold standard when anyone is building. In my, in my field, the COA directors all talk to one another. And when anyone is looking to build a senior center or a combined community center, they all hope that Catlin will be the firm that is hired, that he is designing the best, most innovative, most space conscious, most, however, whatever the sites require, he is the most innovative firm available.
One last comment, Mr. Chair. This is the architect that has experience building on parks in particular, if I remember, Ms. Petrosi.
Uh, I don't know that I said anything about building parks in particular.
I think Long Meadow was in a park.
It may have been. Yes. Yes. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Pauline.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome. One more question on Zoom. I remember that's Sean.
Yes. Yes. I, I was just curious about the format of this meeting. I thought there was one time for community input and that was it.
So at the beginning of every meeting, we do have public input where the public is invited to come forward and make whatever, ask questions, whatever comments they want on any general subject. As we go through the agenda, as part of the normal select board meeting, we do welcome questions and comments from the, the public also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments?
So I guess, Mr. Chair, just to kind of reiterate where it is right now, that if approved, the money spent will also include public input meetings. Okay. Where the public will be able to attend, where the public will be able to say, well, we don't think that there's room enough for that program, but there's room enough for this program because we're using the term program. But that the input, everyone has a chance to, to pick out the color of the paint.
There's still a public process to what's going on as we move forward.
Now, just to follow up a question. If we get to town meeting, we've gotten this presentation, it's been presented to town meeting, and town meeting then approved, would the public still be a part of the process?
Yes, I believe so. Dennis?
Janice, I guess partly in response to, to your question. To be clear, the building committee, the official building committee, which was appointed by the select board with the charge that the select board gave us, those meetings are subject to the open meeting law, are properly posted. I forget the exact date. I think there's one next week actually. So those building, official building committee meetings are always open to the public. And people can kind of come and similar to now, provide public input, ask questions, and we'll do our level best to provide as much information and answer the questions as we can. In addition to that, I know that Katie is working on developing a survey. And we will be asking the community to weigh in on, and again, weigh in on, if such a structure were built, how would you like to see it viewed? What kinds of services would you find valuable there? What kind of recreation and games would you like your nine-year-old to be able to engage in? Would you like your grandfather to be able to come to lunch? You know, all of it. So the community will have a chance to say, wouldn't it be great if? Wouldn't it be great if we had this activity or if we had access to that program? Or we had a climbing wall where the kids could learn, you know, whatever, you know, whatever the case may be. So I would encourage people to, again, as, as Ms. Copeland mentioned earlier, to stay involved and to think of what the possibilities to the community could be if such a structure existed in the town. And we'll, we'll see how it plays out over the, over the coming months. But there's nothing, there, there are no secrets here. There is no conspiracy here. Please.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
No? Okay. So before the board, we do have a request for $150,000 of ARPA funds for the building committee.
So I'll make a motion that the board approve spending $150,000 from ARPA funding for the building committee for the proposed senior center, community center as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And chair says aye. Janice, you have your money. Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay. So next on the agenda, we have Air and Devens 2033 study and report committee interviews and appointments. So we do have in our packets, multiple letters, or sorry, multiple applications to serve on the Devens Committee, the local Devens Committee. So this is a committee that will look at, from an air perspective, what the potential impacts are, whether we look to retake our acreage that we have in Devens, or leave it be, or just leave the status quo. So question first is, do we have like a list, a punch list of who has submitted? Because I know we have some applications in.
Yeah, it'd be easier to read.
I kind of threw one together at work today, but I'm sure.
Yeah. So everyone that is in the packet, that's all of them. I can try to.
Okay.
Truncate it for you. Sorry. I, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, while getting that together, I just wanted to add that the town advertised these opportunities per the board with a deadline of, of June 20th for interested applicants. So the ones before the board are all folks that submitted applications by the deadline.
Okay. So I had put them in the packet alphabetically ordered. So if you want to jot them down, or we'll take a, Jim Fay.
Yep.
Rebecca Jones.
Sandra.
Sandra Kelly.
Yep. Sandra Kelly. The next one is Rachel Cozera. Barry Shorzel.
Okay.
Eric Sekman. And Jeff Tillitson.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So I was thinking we just have the candidates come up one at a time. Is that okay? Or do you have a reference?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we start with Mr. Fay? Jim, you want to come on forward, please?
All righty then. Come back.
Evening, Jim.
A while anyway.
Yeah, like a boomerang. You throw it and it just comes back.
Why don't you sit at the table? You can never leave.
Ah, that's true. That's true. My heart is here.
So thank you for your application. I, I know it's in the packet. I read through it. But I just want to kind of give you the opportunity, if you want to take like two or three minutes, and just kind of put a narrative as to why you want to serve in the committee and, and what you think the, the potential benefits and also potential risks are with Devens.
Okay. Well, this is 50 years old. When I put the application in and they said, well, how can you help the Air Devens situation to become better? For me, it goes back to 1973, when I come in from Europe as a military man stationed at Devens and had my second son born at the hospital at Devens, when it was a full-fledged hospital. Now it's the Federal Medical Center. So the history with me goes, goes way back between being a kid from Boston at Devens and working at Devens when it was 15,000, sometimes 20,000 strong, between the 6,000 civilians and the 15,000 military. So in 1974, I want to say, and this won't take too long, I was working with the EMS in Air in 1974 as a liaison between Devens and Air. Because I'm the kid from Boston. I can, I can bring everybody from Devens all around. I know, I know the neighborhood, right? So that, that led to getting to know Air better and better. And the fact that my, my family, if they wanted to visit, they had to call first. That was always nice. So I got to know Air very, very well over the last, quote, 50 years. And, and as my application indicates, going from all of the various boards and just about all of them in various times, selectmen, personnel board, et cetera. It gives me a, a range of historic, I don't want to say institutional, but historic knowledge of, of what Devens and Air was and what, what it could become. And in fact, I worked with the, the, like I said, the BRAC in, in 96 with, with Kennedy and so on down the line. I can, I can kind of postmark everything up to include the, the recent. the line, I can kind of postmark everything up to include the recent PFAS effort with Laurie Neering in AIR, trying to get, you know, once, AIR was once, not AIR, but Devon's was once a superfund waysite. So Laurie and I go back 30 or 40 years to when 10th Group used to clean the parachutes with PCE, and hence the plume under the natural river and so on. So there's just a wealth of information that can be brought to the table as this merger of what to do with Devon's. It's not simply a matter of asking AIR and Harvard and Shirley, and I take it, if I may pause a minute, Lancaster, I take it, is no longer in the slice.
Out of the picture. Yep. They said, no, we don't care.
As they did years ago, yeah.
Yeah, so no.
So it's the three towns.
Yep.
And I also have a working relationship with, or at least historically, with the various boards, being a member of this board and then on to the Joint Board of Selectmen with AIR, Harvard, and Shirley. So what I bring to the table is quite a bit in terms of historic knowledge. And the fact that, I'm proud to say for AIR, by the way, my son, Jim, who was an AIR graduate, just made captain in Lowell, in the Lowell Police. My son Christopher, Joseph Christopher, who also graduated AIR High, is now the deputy chief in Nashville. So I owe AIR and particularly the AIR Fire Department and Police Department a lot in terms of what they've done to help me and the entire town, help me raise my family. So what can I do? Play me.
Great, thank you. Any questions specifically?
I do, and this would be not only to Jim, but to all the other applicants. So the committee would be, it's an AIR Devon's committee, because we should have a Devon's component on it. It would also be feeding up with the Devon's Jurisdictional Framework Committee, which is the Hierarchium Committee, okay? And so it would be, you know, a constant, you know, feeding of information. But I want to make sure that everyone, I guess my question is, is does anyone have any preconceived notion of, that's it, we're getting back our property? Or does everyone understand that, and I will be talking about this later, under new business, like, you know, the fact that we have like 20% of Vicksburg Square is in Harvard, how can we manipulate that, maneuver that? That's a terrible word that I just used. Terrible, but I've said it at the jurisdiction meeting, so they all laugh. But to, as far as negotiation, okay? So I just, I guess that's my question. Are you, do you already have in your head, this is the way it's going to be?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I see this as number one, meeting the legislative requirement of 498, first of all, in that we need to do this, and we owe the town the opportunity to ask the various questions of, it's easy to say, what would you like? But then what can be done economically as well? Because we've seen, and I've seen AIR come from a Disneyland possible site to a waste site to a possible airport, oh no, the airport's coming, everybody was pulling their hair out. So what I would be looking at is not only what it can become, but is it economically feasible to all the players involved? In other words, again, to quote Mike Hogan, one of the early directors, floats all boats.
Excellent, good question, thank you. Any questions?
No.
I don't have any further questions, so we'd like to do is go through all the other applicants and make a decision at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Chair, I misspoke, there's one more, I'm sorry, Ben Vogelsang is also here in attendance. And it looks like I forgot his information.
I think he should go next, because she forgot him.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry, what's the last name?
Is it Vogelsang?
You said it perfectly.
Yeah, Vogelsang.
Okay. Well, I mean, it does put you at the end of the alphabetical order, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Don't take it personally?
No.
Okay.
I'm enjoying it.
Is Rebecca Jones here this evening? Rebecca, please come on up.
Hello.
Thank you very much for the application for the committee. Do you want to take a couple of minutes and just kind of give us a little bit of a narrative of what you feel and what you want to accomplish?
Sure. I'll start out by saying, I can actually top Mr. Fay in that I've been here longer, associated with Devon's.
Ooh.
I lived on Devon's and in AIR in the mid 60s, coming here in 65 with my family, I was military dependent. So I have the ability to understand the folks who have that vision of, we want it all back, we want it restored, we want it the way it was. As somebody whose childhood home and every landmark that meant something to my family or myself no longer exists, it's gone. On the other hand, having lived, we weren't fortunate enough at the time, the timing, the economy, and other issues prevented us from staying in AIR when my father got out in the 70s. So I grew up in a nearby town. But we came back here constantly. AIR was our base and always has been. And I was so happy when my husband and I were downsizing and got the opportunity to come back to AIR in 2014, because this is, this to me was home, not the town I spent half my childhood in, but here. So again, I have that sense of the history, the people, the town, but having lived in this area through all my stages of life, I understand a lot about what people need, what the area needs, and the potential. How Devon's used to affect us, how it currently does, and what the potential is for the future, for meeting the needs of the town and the community around us as it changes. So I'd like to be a part of that. I think I could help with that vision and listening to people and pulling in those ideas and thoughts and wants and needs, and helping to get the information, pull it together. And just from a professional perspective, I've also had a lot of experience working on large projects, submitting reports, dealing with state and federal officials at times, contractors. So I understand the red tape, things like open meeting law, I have served on some other town committees and projects in the past. So I understand what's required there and building consensus. Let's face it, Harvard doesn't have the same objectives and goals as we do, but we have to consider them and we have to work with them, and I can get them to come around to our point of view. I can't, I'm not saying I'm magic, but who knows? And then just as a, throw it out there, I also would like to see AIR be the place in everyone else's eyes that we see it as, as home and a great place. I have a little side interest in that. I'm actually related to James Cook AIR. So I kind of like to see my family's town, you know, be a nice little star here in the Valley, and become what it could be, to meet everybody's needs.
Excellent. Very well said, thank you very much. Any other, any questions?
I have just the same question you had for Jim. Do you have a preconceived notion of what it should be?
I don't. My personal experience has been not just with Devon's, but with other places I've lived, I've worked, and had a connection to. It's me, but ended up being bulldozed, redeveloped, something changed. So sometimes it's turned out to be an absolutely wonderful thing and for the better and the vision that was there. So I'm open to possibilities, not just keep it as it was, but at the same time respecting the history, the culture, the past. Not everything is supposed to be saved. Sometimes what we replace it with might be better, and other times if we integrate it, it becomes a really wonderful thing.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And is Sandra Kelly here this evening? Sandra, please come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you all tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Well, I have a different perspective. My father was actually the Department of Transportation, so we moved from Massachusetts and we moved around the US, and then we moved to Germany. And I actually worked for the military, and I worked on some of the military bases over there. And when we came back to Massachusetts, we came back to Pepperal. And we had done Volkswagen's over in Germany, and the first place we did a Volkswagen's was right here in Devon's. And it was wonderful. You know, it was, I'm not military background, he wasn't, but it was just nice to be back in that surroundings, coming back to the US. You know, we've gone to Devon's, to the Officers Club, we've done the same thing over in Bedford as well. And throughout all of that, life has changed, moved around. My daughter and I had come down here to see the fireworks over on the Groton, you know, the Groton area, and seeing Devon's and all of this. But my husband and I actually settled in AIR seven years ago, so I've seen AIR change from what it was when Devon's was active to what it is now. And I have to say that it makes me very happy to see this town grow and prosper the way it has. This is now my hometown, plan on living here for quite a long time. Unfortunately, he passed away in June, so I'm staying, thank you, but I'm staying here. And so with that, I want to see or be part of the growth of the town. I have no preconceived notions about how things should be one way or the other, very much, everybody needs to work together. That's exactly what needs to happen, it needs to be a teamwork basis, give and take, you need to consider everything and not just say, this is what it needs to be, this is what it has to be. It's everybody needs to come together to work to a common cause, to get where we need to be. And my background professionally is I actually worked for a payroll company, but in that, in my career before that, I've worked with CEOs, CFOs. My father always said, they put their pant leg on, just like everybody else does, right? From the janitor right up to the CEO and CFO, and there's really nobody that I can't speak with or speak to professionally without emotion, but come to a common cause and a common, and a common direction. So I don't have experience in a committee, and that's why I was hoping that this would be the great opportunity to do it. I love history, I'm very much in tune to what needs to happen in AIR as far as economically, to build the town, build the surroundings, and make everything cohesive, so that people want to come here, so that people want to live here. You know, as I said, this is now my town, I'm planning on staying here, I'm not going anywhere. So I just want to see the growth, and I want to see it prosper the way that it should. And, you know, I do have some history back out with World War II and Devon's and like that, so the historical aspect of it too is something that I look forward to digging into a lot as well. But I really, I really just think that it can come together and it can work.
All right, excellent. Any other questions?
So I just, I guess, not really a question, more of a comment, that, you know, and everybody's talking about the history of Devon's and everything like that, and that is great, but I just caution everybody, don't get lost in it.
Yeah.
You know, because we also kind of have to like, you know, know it and talk about it, obviously, because it is interesting, it's fascinating, but don't get lost in it because we need to create a new history.
Right.
So that'd be just more of a comment to everybody.
And you can actually see that with the way Devon's has transformed right now, I mean, there's large corporations there, but then there are still some buildings that are still existing.
Right.
That are still being used as they should be.
Right.
And, you know, but you've also got the corporations that are coming in, there's a brand new one that just opened up, and I see that they're, I forgot what they're building or what they're adding to it, but there's so much commerce and everything that's coming into the community through Devon's. So there's a lot of opportunity for growth, but there's also opportunity to try to keep some of that historical aspect of it, if it's possible and if it works with everything else. That's the whole thing, it all has to work together to be cohesive. You can't just say, we need to keep the history, we can't forget about this, but build commerce at the same time.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you, Sandra.
Thank you very much.
And is Rachel Cozera here this evening? Rachel, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Were you at the symposium?
Yes.
I knew you looked familiar.
So if you want to just kind of give us like a two-minute narrative, what do you, why you want to serve on the committee, and kind of, I guess, answer also the question if you have any preconceived notions as to what it should be?
So I don't have any preconceived notions of what it should be, so I'll start with that. But I am interested in this project because I believe I'm one of the newer imports, but we moved here in the spring of 2020. And so getting involved in the community has been, you know, I'm not quite sure where to start, but I was really inspired by the symposium and just meeting the folks there, and because I have a pretty eclectic background, I feel as though that I would be a good resource to come and just work really hard, and I think it's important to, you know, not have the preconceived notions, but just to kind of figure out what the community needs, what the future needs, and just make sure that we're keeping sight of that as opposed to, you know, other things. I have my bachelor's degree in history, right now I'm studying to be a massage therapist, not like that's anything, I know, but maybe, who knows? But history has always been really important to me, I really appreciate the history of this region. I'm originally from Connecticut, so I'm learning slowly but surely, but I thought it would be a really exciting opportunity to engage with community and get involved.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I happened to have met her at the symposium, so I chatted, and I was really excited when I met her, so I'm very happy to have seen you apply and do this. There was something about you that day when I was talking to you, I was like, oh, we've got to keep this woman interested in this day, so glad to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right, and is Barry Schwarzel here this evening? Oh, Barry, that's that Barry, sorry.
If the cable cuts off, there's Barry's up here.
Oh, those knees are working great, aren't they?
If I could sit here, because there's nobody to man the camera.
No worries.
Thank you. Yeah, Richard Schwarzel, 188 West Main Street, EMS. I was born here in 1950, I started out as a child, no, I was born here in 1950.
Two minutes, Barry.
I was born here in 1950, but anyway, this excites me just to have the opportunity to interview for this position, because this is our future, and I don't see it as maintaining Fort Devon's, but it's going to shape this whole area, you know, I look at the open space that we might be able to have, but then there's a lot of things like the Harvard Airline going through somebody's house, so who do they, what do we do with that? And as you mentioned before, with the Vicksburg Square, you know, yes, we have a large portion of it, but there's a little part that's not, and whoever gets that, what do you want to do with that? And not only that, but the residents, do we have enough in town to support that infrastructure? You know, water, sewer? I know they have their own police, I mean, own fire, but I don't know, I don't think that that would come under the AIR airline, but the state troopers would probably go away, so it would probably be, you know, Town of AIR. But I'm just excited to have an opportunity to be on this committee, to shape our future. And my grandparents hopefully will, you know, be looking down and saying, good job, boy, but keep working with all these other people. And I realize that you have to work with a lot of people at Devon's Enterprise Commission, Mass Development, all these different planning boards, being on a couple of, I'm on the Historical Commission in AIR and the CPC, I've worked, you know, for quite a while with those, so I've had to work in public meetings, and so I think that I'm a pretty good person that works with other people, especially with my AIPAC background as well, and my research for the book that we did about 10 years ago, so.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think you covered everything.
I think you did, very well said, thank you, Barry.
It was a good book, I have it.
Thank you.
And then Eric Sekman? And then Eric Sekman? Evening, Eric. So, if you don't mind, just kind of two to three minutes, just kind of what you would like to bring to the committee and what you'd like to...
I won't start in 1950. I will, I wasn't around.
If you were, you'd look really good.
So, I'll start in 75. So, I've been in town since 2013. Now live right across. I never thought in my life that I would really want to live in a small town. Grew up in a small town on the other side of Worcester. Wasn't all that fun, nothing much to do, but I really love this town. It's not, you know, it's just a little town in the middle of nowhere. There's, there's a lot here that's in the middle of a lot of things. I can look out my window and I see Town Hall and I love it, especially in the winter with the lights and everything. I certainly have no preconceived notions, because I don't even know where any lines are or supposed to be over there.
Excellent, because we might want to, you know, move them.
Yeah, no idea. I've even asked my wife, like, "Where is Eyre's..." But my youngest son plays in soccer tournaments over there and I always love going over there. It's a beautiful space, it's, you know, it has developments, it has open space, it has areas that still need to be revitalized and whatnot. I just think it's fantastic. I love that our town has managed to keep its, sort of, some of its historic feel, just even just based off, you know, our Main Street here. It's very, very, you know, yeah, just, it's very historic in a sense in its feel, but that we also do things in town. We're not just like, "Yeah, Eyre is what it is and we want to just keep it the same and we don't want anything to change and nothing." And I just think having that opportunity, whatever might come of it, but just the opportunity to look into it and, and see what, what, you know, possibly we could do to bring to the town, to enhance it and, you know, additional opportunities. It's just a fantastic possibility.
Excellent.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I think that covered.
Very well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Mr. Tulletson, Jeff. So, first question, are you requesting on, as an at-large resident or as a member of the planning board?
I did speak with, Jeff Tulletson, by the way, of Quirky Drive. I did speak with the chairman of the planning board by email. I made him aware of this and he said, "I have his support," so I don't know, okay? I don't know what the number of the people on the community are going to be and stuff like that, but I would be very interested as a member of the planning board and if that works, I would bow out now.
All right, well, why don't you give us your two to three minute...
Been here about nine years. As many of you know, I've worked sometimes, seems tirelessly, and sometimes with a lot of patience on planning here in town, in the direction that town's going. Devens offers us some incredibly, some incredibly great opportunities, marrying the history of Devens with the future of Eyre. I personally have a belief that the person whose house is cut in half will make the decision that Eyre's the place to be. I have, I have, we have many friends in Harvard who have said, "When the kids are done, your town's cool, we want to move." So, we'll see what happens. I'll let you know if any, if any of that comes to fruition. By and large, I think many of you know, I, I enjoy working with people who come to the meetings with different viewpoints. I want to hear everything. I think there's great opportunities over there, I don't know what they are. Open space with the amount of business development going on over there. I mean, we've done some pretty cool things here in town. There's some things on our horizon right now that will help to support the services needed to house those people, if the density we get comes in through the changing of the zoning bylaws, the OSRD is not directly involved with Devens, but that could be used in Devens also, where we maintain open space by allowing developers to work with smaller section, more units on less land. The form-based code, same thing. Yes, it is bringing density in and that's a hard thing for many people to see, but a lot of people in a little area, it's a lot easier for a town to afford over time than a lot of few people in a large area. So, with that being said, any questions? And I have no preconceived notions about what's going on over there. I really enjoyed the day of the touring we took and finding out more and more about Devens.
That was fun.
And, you know, my background to Devens is I played frisbee there years ago as a, when I could run.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah, all right, thank you Jeff. And then finally, Ben.
All right.
Please apologize for the omission.
Last but not least.
No problem, you got that right, all right. So, yes, everybody knows my name is Ben Vogelsang, I live on 36 Westford Road. And just to give you a little background about myself. Well, first off, let me say, I was at the symposium for the second day and after those maps came out, I, all my preconceived notions shattered. So, I have absolutely no preconceived notions after that. My background, I grew up in a town called Kankakee, Illinois, it's about an hour south of Chicago. I enlisted in the Air Force in 1997 and I served over 20 years, retiring in 2017 down in Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Most of my career was spent doing support for the Army, so I have a lot of knowledge of how the Army operates and just the military in general. What I did in my career and what I still continue to do actually is I'm a meteorologist, currently working for IBM, that's what brought me up to Massachusetts. And I came up here in 2018, about a year after I retired from the military. Lived in Chelmsford because I didn't know the area, but my wife and I were intent on, after moving around here, there and everywhere, that we were going to find a town and we were going to finally buy a house, buy some property and stake our claim and call it home. The way that we found Eyre, my wife actually had to have a procedure done at a Shoba Valley Hospital. So, we drove through here and I'm just, I was looking around, I said, "It really feels like home." Okay, I'm going to have to keep this in mind when we're looking for a house. And lo and behold, we just, we're lucky enough to find a place here in Eyre. And so, ever since 2019, I've definitely, I've staked my claim here. It feels like home and I want to, you know, I definitely want to be a part of the community. I've never served on a board at all anywhere before or in any sort of local politics, but it's always been a passion of mine, something I've been very interested in. You know, besides the, besides the meteorology, meteorology part, I've worked, you know, during my time in the military with a lot of different environmental type agencies. So, I definitely have that sort of background. In the military, you know, I supervised over 20 years, I mean, I supervised hundreds of different troops for part of many different units. So, when it comes to teamwork, forming a team, being part of it, leading, whatever it may be, I'm, I'm pretty well-versed in that. I would also say that, you know, I also had quite a few additional duties, you know, outside of the meteorology, environmental realm as well. I was a resource advisor additionally for my unit for a couple of years. So, I'm pretty well-versed in using the GPC, Government Purchase Card, you know, using federal funds for the unit, you know, trying to figure out what everybody wants by the end of the fiscal year, all that good stuff. So, I definitely bring a breadth of experience with me. And this is just my way of wanting to give back to the community that I definitely plan on calling home for many, many years.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
All right.
Thank you, Ben.
Awesome, very well.
Thank you.
All right, so we have, so, correct me if I'm wrong, so we have five open positions on the board, correct?
Five or six.
It's six with five Eyre residents, one Devens residence?
One Devens, at least one resident of Devens of those five, at least.
Of those five. So, we have four positions that are available for Eyre residents. All right, that makes it more difficult. I don't think we've ever had this problem in my, in my 15 years of doing this.
Can we just expand the board?
Yeah.
The committee?
Yeah.
Can we expand the board?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, to your question, if the board, I mean, you constituted the seats of the committee, the board could amend that if it chooses.
We would have to take that action before we make the appointments though, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many, did we just interview?
Seven.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight total.
But if Jeff would do it as a planning board...
Jeff's planning board.
Okay, so Jeff, sorry, planning board.
I almost dropped you.
No offense, neighbor.
I didn't know what the word was, so, you know. I'm so excited to see, by the way, it's great that Madame Berg had that speech, it's really great to see you.
Yep, so you're bored.
This is, yeah, nice enthusiasm for this committee.
Absolutely. Can we do that tonight though, expand the board?
Yeah, we can. We have the authority.
So, in order to have seven people plus, instead of five...
We need to keep it an odd number though, that's the only, that's the only caution.
So, it'd be seven?
Yeah.
Eyre residents?
Yeah.
One Devens resident?
That's eight people total.
Two planning board and one board of selectmen, so 11 people.
Okay, that works.
Any other thoughts or...
No, I think that works, I mean, honestly, as everyone has said, I am very excited to have this level of interest.
This was so exciting.
Yeah, and honestly, even, you know, I'll say this, everyone who's moved to town, like, so I've been in town for like 25 years, almost 25 years, but those of you who have stepped forward, have been here for like 10 years or less, that's huge. So, thank you very much, because this is really a forward look, which is great, so thank you.
Nice enthusiasm, well, too, it's so exciting.
So, I'll make a motion that the board approve the expansion of the Eyre and Devens 2033 Study and Report Committee from nine positions to 11 positions.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
And then, do we do these individual?
We can group everyone together, correct? Even though we're going to have Mr. Tulletson through the planning board.
He won't be in our motion, the planning board will do it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, you want to...
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion that the board of, uh, the select board appoint Jim Fay, Rebecca Jones, Sandra Kelly, Rachel Kuzera, Barry Schwarzle, Eric Sekman and Ben Vogels, Bogelmann?
Vogelstein.
Vogelstein?
Vogelsang.
No, Vogelstein, sorry. To the Eyre and Devens 2033 Study and Report Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Congratulations. We all look forward to working with you.
Yes.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
So, if you can, stick around for the new business, otherwise, you know, when the video posts, fast forward to that.
All right, so that's all for the Eyre Committee, oh, sorry, the Devens Committee. So, moving up, we are running a little behind this evening. Up next is Department of Public Works, Dan Van Scholway. Good evening.
You ready to see here? Five, six, sorry.
Too many.
Yeah. So, the first item tonight is, we had a little bit of bad news. On July 5th, we had a sinkhole open up in the evening and the Highway Department responded and the sinkhole was about the size of a sewer manhole. And this was right on West Main Street near the fire station. And so, Doug, the Highway Foreman, called me in, I checked it out with him. We checked out all the utilities, everything seemed okay except the sewer might have been a potential problem. So, doing some more research of the issue, the next day with Matt Hurn on the town engineer, myself and some others, we found out that the sewer main, a 24-inch trunk line, which accepts about 80% of the sewer in town at that location, had failed. And the reason for that, we found out, was because at the location, it's what's called a drop connection. And so, when you have to change, a drastic change in vertical height of a pipe that's flowing by gravity, so instead of just keeping it on a straight gravity slope, you have to drop down like three feet. There's a culvert there and you have to drop down probably more like eight feet to get under that culvert. And so, that drop connection causes a churning of the sewer liquid, which causes the sewer gases, the hydrogen sulfide, to kind of flurry. And so, that ate away at the manhole and the sewer, the 24-inch sewer pipe at that location. So, if you go down to the next downstream manhole, everything looks fine. But at this location, everything was really in poor condition. So, long story short, the sewer was still flowing, but this is an emergency condition. So, at any time, you know, that sinkhole could cave all the way in and then we'd have a disaster out there. So, we did an emergency procurement and got a contractor out there to repair this right away. And so, working with Robert, or Carly as well actually at the time, we signed an agreement with this contractor, GVC Construction out of Lunenburg, who does this type of work. It's, this is a very intense, it's a very complex project, because on that section of West Main Street, it's the main road, there is a lot of utilities. The sewer main itself was 14 feet deep and groundwater is at nine feet. There is an eight-inch high-pressure gas main abutting the manhole that we have to replace. There, there's several, there's a 36-inch drain line, so it was, it was a very complex job. And I would just commend Matt Hurn on and Kimberly Abraham and the rest of the DPW too for, for getting this, this done. So, I don't know if you want to show a few of the photos, Carly, if you have that. I did put together, put together today a couple of, yeah. Matt put together a quick memo kind of summarizing what we had done.
I was like, are we, are we digging to China or God?
Are the pictures in your memo?
No, I emailed them today, but I do...
I got two memos from you.
Yeah, it's one of those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's one of them, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
While they're looking for the photos in the interest of time. So, the first item, obviously, we'll be looking for the select board to ratify the contract that we entered into under the emergency procurement, because it exceeds the authority level of the town manager. But because it was an emergency, at the next possible meeting, which this is, we're, we'd be looking for the board to ratify that emergency procurement.
Yeah. So, if you want to scroll down, so there's the sinkhole originally. You can see it's very similar size to those manhole covers nearby. And then, and actually, where that guy's left foot is, is about where the, the sinkhole actually, you can see down to if you look through the, through the opening, you can keep going. Oh, there's some of it, it's not very good, collapsed. So, this is as they're removing the old manhole. And you can see it's heavily corroded there, and keep going. Big excavator putting in a shoring. They had to do some, some piles, they had to drive in piles because you're working right against other utilities to protect those and protect caverns, you can keep going. There's the bypass, so you have to set up a bypass for that, that flow, which is several hundred gallons per minute. And we also had to accommodate the fire departments, we had to trench that bypass underground. So, that's a very complex job. If we were designers, it would take a while. And there's the pipe, which is typically about three inches thick, 24-inch concrete pipe. And I have a sliver of it and it measures to be about half an inch to three-quarters of an inch thick. That's how heavily corroded it is at this location. Now, that's a blurry picture, but it kind of shows the depth of the, and all the shoring and piles that they had to drive in. That's when they're getting ready to put in the, the new sewer upstream. And that's them repairing, you can see the new sewer, the green pipe is connecting to the black manhole. That's a new upstream pipe. You can't see the downstream, which is a dropped down about 14 feet to the bottom. And that's the, they had to remove the drain pipe and then put it back in place afterwards to be able to do the work. So, they actually cut it out, now they're putting it back together. So, and you can see all the utilities there. There's two lines that go to Devens, they're old army lines, those two are your, your pointers on. There's a gas main there, the high-pressure gas, you can see it's basically kissing the manhole. It's that gray pipe right there, yeah. So, pretty intense work and it was an emergency condition and it didn't end up being a total disaster there, which is what I was always worried about. These are the hardest things I think we deal with is emergencies, so. So, the ask tonight is, you know, I'd recommend the board to ratify the agreement, which was signed by the town, town manager with GVC Construction. And that was for up to $100,000 in repairs. And then also to sign an amendment, Amendment One, which allows the work to go up to $250,000. Now, we don't think it's going to go that high, we're done with the work now, we're just waiting for the time a material slips. That's how you do this type of work, because you don't know the scope and things change, so. And I mean, it will be paid out of the, we have II budget. And it will be paid out of the, we have II budget in place, so that's where this is coming from, the II that we, and so unfortunately, that eats away at other things, well, we'll get into that next thing.
All right, so step one is ratification of the agreement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions, comments?
So what, what other projects would it eat away at?
So the next project on the agenda, actually, Sandy Pond Road Sewer Rehab, so the II work is designated to do sewer rehab work.
Is, um, could we use ARPA funding for this?
You could, yes, yeah, so this kind of all ties together, yeah.
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
The DPW director's proposing the next item, item two, ARPA funds for the Sandy Pond.
Okay, but it's all tied together.
Yes.
All right, no problem.
But you are correct, it would be eligible.
Okay, that's my other question, then.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion for ratification?
I'll make a motion that the board approve the, or ratification of the agreement for the West Main Street Emergency Twenty-four-Inch Sewer Trunk Repair with GVC Construction Incorporated of Lunenburg.
Seconded.
Do we need a dollar, we need up to?
Up to?
It was up to a hundred thousand.
Up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Up to a hundred thousand was the agreement.
Up to a hundred thousand.
Thank you. And I have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Then the, the next, oh, sorry, Mr. Chad, the next step would be Amendment One, which allows the work to go up to two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars, or similar, but this would be signed by the Chair, I have it here. There you go, Carly.
Thank you.
Separate motion?
That's a separate motion, yes, please.
Make a motion that the board approve Amendment One for the contract with GVC Construction Incorporated of Lunenburg, Massachusetts, to go up to two-hundred thousand dollars.
Two-fifty.
Two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars.
Seconded. With signature by the Chair.
With signature by the Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Numbers.
They get hurt.
They do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so the next item, so this is the award of the Sandy Pond Road Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. So Carly, you want to pull up that second memo I put? So in my memorandum to the board, I indicated we received the bids on July twelfth for this project, but per the last select board meeting, we were gonna talk about potentially using ARPA funds toward the Sandy Pond Road Sewer, so the award of this project depends on if we use any ARPA or not. So today I did a, in the last few days, I've been doing some analysis of, you know, what funds we have available now, and what the DPW, what we would recommend doing, and how much ARPA it would cost, and, and so I'll kind of, I can go through this memo a little quick, which will explain it, so. So at this time, the FY twenty-four, or the available funds we have for the, the project are just over a million dollars, one point zero four five. That accounts for spending the two-hundred-fifty thousand for the West Main Street Sewer Repair, because we were supposed to have one point two five million in II, now we've already spent two-hundred-fifty thousand. So the bids came in, and the three low bidders, they are evaluated, and they're all qualified, they do this work a lot, and, and with our consultant, Arcatis, they, they all can do the work, and are qualified. So the, what DPW, what I would recommend doing is doing the, what's called, there's two types of pipelineing we can do for this work, there's ultraviolet pipelining, UV pipelining, or there's hot water and steam cure. And so ultraviolet pipelining, it has some advantages to it, and if you want to actually, Carly, scroll down, I guess since I'm talking about it, keep going a little further. Yeah, deep, so, so the UV lining over hot water and steam lining, the advantages to it are, it has a longer lifespan, eighty-plus years versus fifty years for the steam, there's no styrene emissions, which, you know, if there was an, as a liner is put in place, and you use a hot water steam, off-gases styrene, typically that would go out a vent stack of a house, but if there was like a dry trap, it could end up in a house, so, so it doesn't have that, you know, potential environmental impact. The, probably the biggest thing, and, and you know, if this was a eight-inch pipe on like High Street, it wouldn't be a big deal to do the, the steam cure, but a UV liner, you can see the liner, inspect it before you actually finally do the, the curing of it, so you, you can put it in the pipe, make sure that it's, it's circular, and then cure it. With the steam liner, they basically invert it in the pipe, steam it, and then they TV it after to make sure that it formed the pipe correctly. So if it doesn't properly form a pipe correctly in the steam liner, and there's a deformity, say that half the pipe is blocked, a part of the liner went like that, you'd have to dig it up to replace it. And in this case, during, on Sandy Pond Road, some of the sewers there are twenty to thirty feet deep along the pond, and it would just be very expensive to be digging and replacing sewers, so just that alone, the UV liner, it seems like a better product. And it also has a higher strength, and a smoother service, smoother surface, so a smoother surface will allow for a greater flow capacity. So if you want to go scroll back up again now, Carly, so the UV liner, the low bid for that, it costs seventy-five thousand dollars more than the, the steam slash hot water type liner. And when we're talking about the total bid prices, it's just about one point four million for the UV liner, it's one point three two five for the hot water steam, so, so I'd recommend moving forward with the UV liner. So if we go in that sense, if number one here on the, on the memo, you know, we do Sandy Pond Road, and we could also recommend, I'd recommend now at this point, lining that segment of West Main Street, you know, we just did a spot repair, but there's still poor pipe over there, add that to the project. So I did a cost analysis here, the total cost of the project, based on the, the low bidder for the UV lining, contingency, engineering, it ends up being around one point six three eight million. So you'd need about six hundred thousand dollars of ARPA to be able to, to award that on top of the already available funds. Now, I did look at, there's a few other options, if you scroll down, Carly, if you were to go with just the hot water steam, instead of doing the UV, you'd save seventy-five thousand dollars, so the ARPA you would need would be five hundred twenty-five thousand. If we did no ARPA, we could just reduce the scope of the project, and I, I looked at that, we could eliminate, we'd be able to do work from Westford Road to Snake Hill Road along Sandy Pond, we probably wouldn't be able to do the rest of the work without the ARPA, and then we would get to that work next year. So I know if we've, we definitely at least want to be doing that, because we had to replace the pipes on Westford Road, because they were highly corroded, and now, now we can line them, so. You know, and I, if you scroll all the way down now, Carly, some of the advantages to doing ARPA now, the pipe conditions I just mentioned, the hydrogen sulfide corrosion Westford Road, West Main Street, Sandy Pond Road has it, too, it's kind of, you know, sort of prudent to get on that. And then if we do work now, you save on mobilization, you know, inflation costs next year will be a little more, and we don't have to rebid or design. So, so the, my recommendation would be to use six hundred thousand in ARPA to be able to do the whole entire project, be done with it, and then next year, I had a capital request for one point two five million, that would go back to seven hundred fifty thousand, so we could just stay at our sort of status quo we had been doing. I should mention, we did save about four hundred ninety thousand dollars, we put back into ARPA from the previous allocations from the Westford Road Water and Sewer, and from the Spec Pond Transmission Main, so we, we did a good job on those projects, and that's, we can have a discussion, yes.
So the, the scope of the project is Westford Road all the way to, is it just the?
To the Central Ave Pump Station.
The pump station?
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
No, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so am I, okay. No other questions for me? I'll make, take a motion?
I'll make a motion that, okay, wait a minute, so is it just the ARPA, is it two motions we needed?
Yeah, I actually put it in that memo, Carly.
Okay, all right. Okay, there it is, all right, so I make a motion that the select board vote to authorize up to six hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds for infiltration and flow repairs.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
All right, I'll make a motion that the select board vote to award the Sandy Pond Road Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project Alternative Two to National Water Main Cleaning Company in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye.
Excellent.
Thanks. All right, next one. So Change Order Two for the Air West Main Street, West Air Village Mass Works Project, this is the final change order for the project, the project's complete, and there was several unforeseen, some things we had to add in at the end to get the project finished, I included it in the packet, but in the sense of time, the amount of the change order is three hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and five dollars and sixty-nine cents, and I did just note that the final project total will come in at about three point two seven million, and the budget for the project's about three point six six, so we're still, you know, well within budget there. And this would be a Change Order Two for signature by the Chair. Any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
No questions for me?
I'll make a motion that the board approve Change Order Number Two for the Air West Main Street Public Infrastructure Project in the amount of three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, or three hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and five dollars and sixty-nine cents, for signature by the Chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye.
Okay, just real quickly, Item Four is, I know since we've been talking recently with the, the water restrictions, we have, just an update, speaking with Kimberly, that I put in the memo, production of the, has been more resilient in the past several weeks, demand's been pretty stable, and we've been able to kind of alleviate those large spikes in demand, and, you know, it's probably a combination of the weather and also the conservation measures that are in place. And the, the wells have actually had some breaks on the weekends, which had not been typically happening, and, and storage tanks, monitoring those, they've been staying pretty full, so we've been doing a good job keeping up and being in a safe place.
Everybody's just putting their buckets outside and collecting the rainwater.
Natural, yeah. And then, so my fifth item is just a, sort of, this is just an announcement, essentially, Central Ave at Groton Harvard Road, at the previous select board meeting in April, we did present that we were gonna move forward with a four-way stop at this intersection, and the plan is to move forward with that four-way stop conversion on July twenty-sixth, so we, we've gotten some notice out, which you've probably seen on the website, and I just wanted to, to reiterate that, and if there are any questions, but, but yeah, we're moving forward with July twenty-sixth to start that. And then the final item, I provided the board with a memo on the transfer station hours, so on July sixth of last year, twenty twenty-two, we began operating the Wednesday night hours, so Wednesday was from seven AM to seven PM, and per the contract with the AFSCME Union, the DPW Union, after one year, the town reserves the right to revert back to the previous hours. So I put together a quick analysis of some of the, you know, numbers we've been seeing of users, and sticker sales, and just a few ideas I had, and I'd just like input from the board of, you know, how they want to move forward at this time with this potential option we have to revert backward, or continue. I don't know if you want me to get into any more details, or?
I don't need any details needed on that.
I, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, Janice, then.
So as laid out in the packet, you know, you've indicated a couple of options, so I, I would just like to ask, has anyone called in complaining about the hours?
No.
Okay. I know that we, I know one of the things you've mentioned is like seeking feedback, so we did a survey a couple of years ago, so I, I'm not in favor of doing another survey, because I think that this board historically has surveyed it, I think we've surveyed it, okay? And I think it, you know, one of the things that even looking back at that survey, is that people wanted later hours, now, it's the possibility that we may not have done it on the day that they're looking for, okay? But nobody's complaining, so I think that that's very important to note. I, I do have a couple of the questions, as far as, because it's being, it's been mentioned a few times on social media, are, are, when you go to the transfer station, there's a sign that says permit required to enter, correct?
Right.
So it's being talked about, so I'm, I'm asking, that residents without a permit are getting into the transfer station using the swap shed, now, you don't need to show an ID when you buy the bag, so there's a possibility that they're gonna throw a bag in without the permit, so we could be losing income from the permits, but still getting it from the bags. So I'm, I'm just gonna kind of wondering if, if, how are we kind of monitoring a situation that probably's only happened one or, once or twice?
Yeah, I haven't heard of that yet, but I'll, you know, relay it to the, the transfer station personnel, and we have been selling a lot of day stickers, so they would, essentially, they just get a slip, they don't get a sticker, so it could be just that, there's been.
That's, that's what I was thinking, but I kind of wanted to, to ask it.
Something like that happening, but I'll, I'll ask the guys to be, to be more vigilant, too, and, and see if we can, see if something's going on, yeah.
So I personally think that the board should leave the hours as they are.
I agree with you, actually, my only question or, or comment is, looking at the average number of users that you provided for each month, the question is, like, how do you context that, like, you know, for example, June twenty twenty-three, there were sixteen users, average number of users, what's the, like, what percentage is that of, like, usage for that day, is it ten percent of the users, is it fifty percent of the users, only thirty-two people go?
I didn't go in that, in that deep, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand, but just, that would kind of be my feedback, because I'm in favor with, with what Jana said, I think we should leave things as they are, and then Rate Review Committee will start their process in the fall, and it's something that should be talked about with the Rate Review Committee, if they want to keep the hours, or make a recommendation to the select board about keeping the hours.
I, I can tell you, as, as, and, and of course, there's, there's other members, and they may feel differently, I can tell you, I don't think that I will change my mind, because, and I'll tell you why, and I'll tell, and I'll be completely honest, because I think that we're causing, we're inadvertently causing a problem, okay? So the idea is that we would like more people to use the transfer station, okay? And we all know the various reasons as to why people don't, but I feel that our constant, well, let's try this, let's do this, also turns people off, so I just think that we should be cognizant of that, okay? That being said, I also think that, and, and maybe the Rate Review Committee should talk about this, is that, and I wrote this down so that I could remember right, on August twenty-six, twenty fourteen, the Board of Selectmen held a special meeting to get the results and vote on the recommendation of the Air Curbside Solid Waste Collection Work Group. The motion that tabled the conversation of townwide curbside pickup was written to ensure that if and when the subject came back up, it would be done thoughtfully and without an endgame, and that was because due to some maneuverings at the time by a slug at the time, okay? That was nine years ago, so it is possible that maybe that should be re-looked into. I want to reiterate, though, when I say this, it is not for the idea to close the transfer station, because for one, as it was found out then, you can't, all you'd be doing is closing it to the public, okay? So it, so we would not want to do that, but perhaps it is good idea to create a new group to study the issue, to see what is or is not working. And because also at the time, when we did the curbside, the solid waste master plan of the state was going to be redone as of twenty twenty, so I, I know that you, as the DPW Superintendent, and whatnot, are looking at all the rules to make sure we're in compliance, but, you know, there might be a page missed, so, you know, but to also to re, it would reengage the public as far as what do we want to do, and if curbside was an option, would have to also look at things like the goals and objection, objections, information of current operations, demographics, curbside collection in the state, proposals, public input, benefit and disadvantages of curbside costs, and whether town policies regarding trash haulers would need to be updated. So it is something I think that will end up back on the table.
Okay, excellent. Pauline, you have a question?
Comment and question?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Janice alluded to Facebook comments or whatever regarding the use of the transfer station. There have been a number, Janet, I don't know if this is what you were referring to, but there have been a number recently encouraging people to just walk in or bicycle in to use the transfer station, no permit required. I'm not going to say who or why, but I'd be happy to share the next one I see.
I, I, I have, I have seen that, and I have seen that, yes.
Um, and I think that needs to be put to a halt, because apparently it is happening. But my question, and, and, and I appreciate the numbers, um, I remember when we talked about this about six, seven months ago, I also asked for a cost benefit analysis. I think the lowest number was twelve at one month in the middle of the winter, which I can appreciate. But more recently, it's like sixteen, I don't have the sheet in front of me, I'm sorry. But that's sixteen people on average in four hours versus however many people are on average between, was it seven to three? Is that what time it opens? So, I, I would like to see the dollars and cents numbers and see what the financial impact these four hours are actually costing them, um, if you could do that.
So, just to follow up on her question, okay, because I was thinking of this myself. The employees are still working a forty-hour work week, correct? Or did we?
No, there is overtime now, right?
But is it overtime, but isn't that, is that the differential on the weekends? Why would they have overtime when they're still working on Wednesdays, an eight-hour shift?
That was part of the...
There's one person who gets an extra four hours per week.
Is that the foreman?
Yeah. Yeah, he gets first.
First ride.
Right.
Right, he gets first ride or refusal, but overtime would only be used when there was something really going on, correct? So, overtime is not like every week, is it?
No, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
The staff is three to seven.
Now, it's more than four, yeah.
But, so I know that, um, what I had hoped, and I said this in a public meeting, is that, you know, you could always take hours from a Monday or Tuesday, or Thursday or Friday. Um, and I know, you know, going back to this last survey that was done, and, and again, this is all things that should be discussed, is, you know, the public has asked why it can't be open to the public every day of the week. So, so I guess the, the question now is, is that, is it the residents using the transfer station? Do they really drive up the cost compared to the days that the residents aren't allowed onto the transfer station? Again, stuff for conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a down-the-road conversation. I do want to try to move the conver, their meeting along if that's...
Oh, no, that, that can be also discussed.
Pauline, you still have your hand up, or are you, did you get your question answered?
I took my hand down, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. So, it sounds like for now, we keep things status quo going forward.
Received, yep.
All right, excellent, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, and we'll move on to the Tom Andrews' report for this evening. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I know we're running about an hour behind. So, in the interest of time, under the administrative update and review of town warrants, all of the warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on June twentieth are in your packet. In terms of the administrative update, we've had a successful fiscal year closeout for FY twenty twenty-three, and we are looking already as to the future of the whole cycle for the next year coming up. In the interest of time, unless there are any questions from members of the select board regarding administration, I'll move on right to the action items.
Any questions?
No.
No questions?
Okay, I only have two, um, action items this evening. The first is appointments. The Insurance Advisory Committee is going to reconvene, um, as the board is aware, in light of the recent, um, increase in trend, um, with the cost of, uh, health insurance, especially this last budget cycle, and the fact that, um, we're due to do our due diligence at looking at, um, in health insurance. We're going to reconvene the Insurance Advisory Committee. As the board is aware, that committee is set by statute. Each of the collective bargaining units have a represent, representative on the IAC that that union selects. But there is a non-union representative and a retiree representative. I'm recommending that the board appoint Amanda Lewis, the Benefits and Payroll Manager, as the non-union representative to the IAC. Historically, the benefits and payroll individual has been the non-union person, uh, to a term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion that the select board appoint Amanda Lewis as the Benefits and Payroll Manager as the non-union representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee to, to a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye.
And then, the other position, I'm respectfully recommending that the select board appoint Kevin Johnston, who is a town retiree, as the retiree representative to the IAC to a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
No questions?
I'll make a motion that the select board appoint Kevin Johnston as the retiree representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee to a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
And one other appointment, uh, to the Disabilities Commission. I respectfully recommend that the select board appoint Donna Lavoy as a member of the Air Disabilities Commission to a term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Any questions?
No.
None.
None for me.
I'll make a motion that the select board appoint Donna Lavoy as a member of the Air Disabilities Commission to a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Thank you to the board. My other item is an update on the opioid settlement allocation. It has taken some time, but we've been able to connect with the Attorney General's Office regarding this matter. This is what I offer in terms of that update, as well as terms of, of next steps. So, as the Attorney General Office, Office stated, the town, we entered into a national class action lawsuit against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. It's a national settlement consisting of fifty-one entities, all fifty states in the, in the District of Columbia. And the Attorney General's Office had brought this up, that it was a national settlement, that they're clear that it wasn't just the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office at the table, but there was fifty-one, uh, entities on a national level. So, there was a lot of, of compromise on data points and discussion and so forth as to how they came up, um, with the formula and the allotment. And the formula was developed on a national level with input from public health officials and experts. So, the development of the formula was not developed by the Attorney General's Office solely. I was also informed that the individuals in the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office that were involved on the Massachusetts piece of developing this are no longer in the Attorney General's Office since there's been a change in Attorney Generals and Governor. So, as we were talking, the formula, and if you recall, there's various key variables to the formula, but one of the national standard formulas was the amount of opioids to county by distribution. So, as we were talking, now, there's a discrepancy between Air and Harvard, but Air is in Middlesex County and Harvard is in Worcester County. So, I beg the question, uh, is that enough of a change in the variable to, to account for that discrepancy? And the data is federal data from the period of two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen. So, it's federal data that isn't necessarily, we're already into twenty twenty-three. I asked about the population data used, which is national census data, but not the national census data. It's, it's, it's too simple to say it's just what any of us can find on the census. And I asked about the county information, which I didn't, um, they didn't seem quite to have. So, in the context of the conversation, I think in terms of next steps, I, is that, um, the town reach out to the National Settlement Administrator, and I have that contact from them. So, this is the office that handled the whole settlement. And we present, um, our questions and information and see what we get back from our response there. Now, the Attorney General's Office correctly cautioned that some of it may be privileged as it was part of a, a negotiation and litigation and what have you. But at least there's another contact, because we still don't have, nor did the Attorney General's Office was able to share much about the actual formula. The other point that was brought up is that for Massachusetts, sixty percent of the opioid funds went to the state, to the State Office of Health and Human Services, and that's approximately a hundred million dollars at the state. And then, the other forty percent went to the cities and towns through, based on counties. And that the town should, and I think this is the next thing we should focus our efforts on, is what we want to use the funding we've received for, but also if there is a, a larger need, that the town formally and officially contact the Secretary of Health and Human Services at the state level and see if there's some additional funding from there. So, not all of the specifics yet that I would hope to have for this evening. The, the, the positive is we now have a contact on a national level to try to get the specific information, um, for that formula. So, hope to have a, have another update on that. The other thing is, I think that the select board shortly, we should begin to discuss with input from the chiefs and others and others in the community, um, you know, potential uses, um, for the funds that we have and if there's a need for additional funds from that hundred million that's at the state level. So, we continue to, to actively work that. Uh, the similar information, um, is being conveyed to Senator Eldridge and Representative Sina as well. So, we'll keep working on it.
Thank you, Robert.
And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions from the board.
No questions for me?
No, none.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, uh, we have for select board member Livingston, Devon's Jurisdiction Framework Committee update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first of all, the, the meeting was held at Devon's on, uh, July twelfth last week. It was, it lasted ninety minutes, I will not be talking ninety minutes, okay? I, I've done my best to, to write up the notes of what happened. So, I want to reiterate, the, the first thing I want to make sure everyone knows, no formal votes were made on anything, okay? But there was some lot of discussions, okay? So, Shirley was the co-host, but evidently, they don't have the capability to hold the meeting in Shirley, so it was held in Devon's. Thirty minutes into the Zoom call, we had to end the call, and people on Zoom had to recall in. Just saying. So, as far as Air, I updated that our local committee was going to be populated and would be up and running, I believe, by August. I, I know that, that no official date has been set, but, uh, you know, so. So, Harvard, the local committee, the Harvard Devon's Jurisdiction Committee, not their, not their select board, but their local committee, they brought to the attention to the committee that they have discussed. So, if, if any of you remember, I talked about Senator Cronin last time, okay? About this Senator Cronin, who is the center, I guess he's the Shirley rep, okay? He went and he submitted a bill to amend four ninety-eight, just, you know, to, no one knew what he was talking about, okay? It failed. But, because of this, um, they wanted to ask our committee, and by also then, you know, kind of bringing it to you guys to see how you feel about amending chapter four ninety-eight to move forward the planning date from twenty thirty to twenty twenty-four, which won't happen, or as soon as possible, due to the attempt to amend by Senator Cronin, the Shirley rep, without any knowledge by the towns or Senator Eldridge, our rep. His amendment was to raise the housing cap and allow zoning in certain commercial districts. This amendment was rejected. Senator Eldridge has reiterated that he is committed to the super town meeting process, and Harvard has also confirmed a commitment from the DEC and Mass Development. They also would not use the amendment process, but use super town meeting. Senator Cronin doesn't like the language in four ninety-eight, which is why he put up a bill without support or knowledge. The Harvard Devon's Committee feels that if agreed to, the request to move the planning date would also send a message to the state of things are happening here. Okay, so that was their quick, uh, stakeholder update. So, then moved over to Shirley, no significant update. They have a local committee created, but it has not been populated, and they, but they still have a goal of a functioning committee. So, the Devon's residents, now, reminder, for those of you who don't know, there are six stakeholders, okay? Air, Shirley, Harvard, thank you very much, it's getting late, the Devon's residents, Mass Development, and the DEC, okay? So, the Devon's residents, they are, work, have become extremely knowledgeable on four ninety-eight, keeping an eye on legislation concerning Devon's. They are considering creating a Devon's-only committee exclusively dedicated to the jurisdiction issue. It is important to remember that not all Devon's residents want to be a part of any other town, okay? So, so that was their update. For the DEC, Peter Lowett has now officially retired, Neil Angus is now the director. The DEC has been responding to a lot of questions from the Devon's residents to include the where is open space recreation plan, governance structure, plans, policies, regulations, et cetera. Peter Lovett, Lowett suggested that moving four ninety-eight planning might be a good idea, but to also re-zone Vicksburg Square to remove the housing issue that seems to be dogging us. He felt that both items should be done concurrently, as this would be a good collaboration and move things forward. Mass Development was not there, no response, no attendance. As you all know, they left the table last year. So, now, we had started over a year ago, an RFEI. What is that acronym, please, again? Request for...
Request for, uh, expressions of interest.
Expressions of interest, thank you very much. I, I typed that up, and I was, I don't know what I, what I did. So, that was started over a year ago, but then was tabled when Mass Development stepped out as, as now being raised, resurrected. Since there was not, nothing was put on the agenda. Agenda was a little messed up, so it was not on the agenda, so, you know, we couldn't even, um, vote on it or whatnot. And to be fair, we also didn't get the clean copy until that morning. So, that, um, had, so that's being resurrected. A working group continued to work on it, and final approval is expected on October eleventh, our next scheduled quarterly meeting. The concern right now is that, what was hoped that Mass Development would pay for the consultant, but Mass Development has stated that we won't see them until a few years from now. So, they don't intend to come, so their plan right this minute is not to come back to the table until, as it currently stands, twenty thirty, okay? So, so then, there was discussion on moving the four ninety-eight date recommended from the Harvard Devon's Committee. The three-year window would remain the same, but instead of twenty thirty for a plan in twenty thirty-three, they were asking for it to be twenty twenty-four for a plan in twenty twenty-seven, okay? Of course, the twenty twenty-four date is not feasible, but was thrown out for consideration. Moving the planning date would not affect the work that the Mass Development has to be done. Theoretically, Mass Development could still be around in twenty forty if the work they had been tasked with is not done. It is not clear if to do the amendment would require super town meeting. So, I asked that question, and it was, oh, I don't know. But I also threw out that even if it, if, if, say, for example, it was not needed, a super town meeting, okay? Would it be a good idea to do it anyways, because it helps our case and it helps get publicized to the state? We mean business. So, it will be further discussed at our next meeting to fully flesh out if this is feasible and what would need to be done and what Pandora's box could possibly be opened. So, the Harvard selectman, Rich Maori, he mentioned that the select board in Harvard feels that this could be a Pandora's box, because, one, the towns aren't ready yet with their separate committees, and the concern of our simple request to move the date would then have other amendments added to it by the state that we would know, not know about until too late. Now, that also happened last year when we approved the, the change in the cap. I guess, um, the Baker administration changed it when it went up to the state. So, the amount that we all thought we were approving got changed, um, by the, by the administration. So, so that is a real concern as far as trying to change four ninety-eight. So, because we don't want... And so, because we don't want them messing with it, we wouldn't know it. So there's a lot of moving parts here, okay? So this is again why a full consultant is needed to come up with an implementation plan. So I mentioned that the three towns may need to pay for it. And I ran for easy numbers. I ran like each town would have to submit, like, you know, contribute like $10,000, okay? Which, you know, just to kind of throw it out there. But also that maybe we need to have two plans that run concurrently. Plan A, changing the date, and Plan B is doing what we still keep doing in case Plan A doesn't work. It was also mentioned that perhaps while requesting to move the date, also rezone Vicksburg Square and move forward with consultant. 498 is our shield, and the minute we open it up, we run the risk of weakening. But if we do it all at the same time, we may have leverage. The state is hot for Vicksburg Square, and this will continue to be a problem. The problem continues to be Vicksburg Square falls on Harvard and Air historical line. Majority is in Air, but until the problem is solved, Supertown Meeting will never approve rezoning. But as mentioned, these are assumptions. We cannot assume that everything would revert back to the way the lines were 100 years ago. What needs to be done is to think outside the box as to what is the best outcome from Vicksburg Square. The buildings are historically protected, as it is an established historic district. I reiterated that property lines could move and that the ideal outcome is that everyone will be equally happy and sad, because that means we have done our job right, give and take, okay? The view from the Commonwealth, though, is that Devon's is simply state property, so the state would not necessarily include the town or even see Devon's as its own community. The Devon Census shows 950 for residents, but that includes Shriver Dobkore. It is really about 500. Few Devon's residents also spoke up to how upset they were with what Senator Cronin attempted to do, and they are constantly calling legislation also, and their legislators. And the next meeting is scheduled for October 11th and will be held here in Air. And that's my update.
All right. So the changing of the date, so you mentioned going from 2033 to 2024, that would be just to submit a plan, and then it would be three years before any action is taken?
I'm just going to reread what I wrote, because to make sure I write it right. So, yeah, so, yeah, so that's for the plan, and then the, I guess the 2033 is the decision.
That's the decision timeframe, correct?
Yeah, so it's that three-year, yes. But it was also mentioned, and actually, this is very important, is that when the plan is submitted, if we submit it on 2030, then it doesn't get talked about by the state until 2031. So if we submit it by 2029, an odd year, an off election year, then, you know, it might hit. So if you submit it in '29, then it'll be talked about in 2030. So that was also mentioned.
Mr. Chair, looks like Alan's jumping.
Yeah, I know all this stuff is moving. And the reason, you know, the committee we put together is, you know, we're calling it right now the Study and Report Committee. Sequentially, as per 498, we were to submit a joint study first, the study between the, each town does its study, coming to study, and then two years later, which then would have been right, 2033, we submit the joint report together to the state. So the first sequence, it's the study we do together, and that study then leads to the final product, the report, that all three towns do with Devon's, oh, with DEC, I'm sorry, and the stakeholders. And then the state, they do whatever they wish at that, but none of us know once they have that. It doesn't mean anything. They could say, well, thank you, this was fine, but we're going to, so, yeah. And I think to accelerate it to the degree Harvard was, I'll just give you my professional opinion, it's not feasible to do this in 2020. It's not advisable, and it was really rather, all right, I'll leave it at that, you know? Oh, thank you.
Right, so, yeah, so to be clear, nobody, everybody kind of looked at the 2024 date, and I had talked to Victor Wright before, and I'm like, you realize we're in '23 and, you know, that's not going to happen. I mean, we can't even type anything to be, you know, sent up. But I also wanted to kind of reiterate how I believe Shirley will have the video, I don't know if it's been posted or not. But, you know, I do think, like, in, for example, with the, with the lines being between Air and Harvard for Vicksburg Square, that, and again, I've mentioned it before, and I've mentioned in every open meeting we've had and whatnot, is that that 20% is negotiable, which is good news. So it's nice to know. So that's negotiable, because I think even Harvard realizes we have to move forward. And so that, so that, again, that's a protected historic district, and that would be rentals with historic tax credits and everything like that, so. So that, it was actually, it was a very productive meeting, and a half an hour of it was the Devon's residents. One poor guy, he just wanted to ask a question and went on a small rant, poor guy. And, but it was, it was a very good meeting.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Janice.
Mr. Chair?
Well, we do have minutes, sorry. For June 23rd, were these the ones that were just sent out this afternoon?
Yeah.
I had not a chance to review them, so can we, do we mind moving those to?
I think it would be a good idea. I kind of perused them, and I was like, what? So, yeah.
All right. So we'll skip the minutes for this evening.
They are on the website, though, just for public review. I had Cindy put them on tonight's meeting page.
Okay.
So if people want to look at them, they're up there now. They just weren't in the packet.
Thank you. I do just want to take a look at them.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we adjourn.
The second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thanks very much, everyone, for your time tonight.